Ms. Johnson.
I'm here.
And Ms. Timkovic.
I'm here.
Okay, and then myself, that makes six. And let me just double check. Okay, so we do not have in attendance Ms. Benford, Mr. Kilpatrick, and Ms. Chapman. Okay. All right, let's go ahead and get started. Our sole agenda item tonight is an update from the Safe Schools Committee. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Carr and or Ms. Stein.
Yeah, Ms. Stein, if you want to go ahead and get started, I just want to say thanks, everybody for rearranging their schedules to make this meeting. I know that, you know, things have been kind of changing quickly lately, and I appreciate everybody, you know, being on board to listen to our presentation, so.
Would you like me to jump in, Ms. Carr?
Yeah, sorry, if you want to.
Okay, didn't want to jump ahead. So what brought us here for the special meeting is that there are quite a few changes that have happened recently that could have a dramatic impact on both the guidance and the operation of the school. So the the Safe Schools Committee met on Monday of this week to review all of the new information, and we will review that with the board and our subsequent recommendation, why we're making that recommendation. So on February 10th, the Department of Health and Human Services announced several changes to the NC Safe Schools Toolkit, which will become effective next Monday, February 21st. Those changes included contract tracing was no longer recommended. This was due to the incubation and virulence of the recent strain of COVID, which is Omicron. Currently in our county, the the latest numbers on the Omicron infection was that ninety-nine percent of the cases were due to Omicron. So that's what led to them really focusing in on that strain and trying to adjust to that. They no longer will automatically recommend or require that public school students or the employees of public schools be kept out of the classroom if they've had a suspected exposure to COVID-19. That is a game changer, because prior it used to be that you all the people had to be masked, and if there was an exposure, if both people were not masked, then they had to go into a mandatory quarantine. So that is no longer something they're recommending, and again, that is due to Omicron and the effects of Omicron as they've learned better. And then the last thing is that the quarantine will continue to be required for any person who tests positive for coronavirus or has symptoms. Okay. Also, the impact on school absences will be significantly reduced, given an adjusted exposure guidelines, which is good news for us. Our goal has always been the first and foremost, the health and safety of our students. And then secondly, that we keep kids in school in person as much as we can. Due to the precipitous drop in COVID infection rates is expected that Mecklenburg Department of Health and Human Services will be recommending on February 16th, which is today, they're currently meeting, to discontinue the county mask mandate. All school age children have had significant amount of time to be fully vaccinated, and LNC has ample COVID tests available for diagnostic testing.
Okay, I'm going to talk about the health metrics in for the board. The appendix included the graphs from the monthly update. The monthly update was February 1st. When we met in January, January 1st was the the last time we went through it as a board. I left it in the appendix because I think it's important for consistency to report that. But given the data is more than two weeks old and with how rapidly things are changing, I didn't want to focus a ton of time on that today because I believe it's kind of old data, and it's, I hate to say not relevant, because it is relevant, but not something I wanted to focus on, but I did keep it in the appendix for you to review. On this slide is they are still reporting the percent positive on a daily basis. When we prepared the presentation, they were going through the 12th of February. I looked today, which has data through the 14th of February, and the percent positive dropped to fourteen point five as of Monday, the 14th, so it is continuing its decline. For context, when we met in January, the positivity rate was like in the mid to high twenties. And I think the week before that, it was in the thirties. So over the past like two or three weeks, we've seen a significant decline in the positivity rate. The CDC County map is still reporting, I think, all counties in North Carolina in the red. And just to refresh your memory, there are two metrics that they're looking at for that. One is case rate per one hundred thousand. And they require that to be a hundred or below to be off of the red and then percent positive, and that was ten percent or below to be off the red. Actually, the case rate per one hundred thousand, it might actually be higher for the red, but but a hundred is kind of what they were targeting. So we're we're not, we're still in the red for that metric. But as we continue to see declines, you know, hopefully that will change. Okay, the next slide. This is the COVID dashboard for internal Lake Norman Charter. This was updated effective today. Well, actually, it was updated yesterday. Thank you, Ms. Shipman, for getting that to us a day early. As you can see, we have seen a substantial drop in our COVID numbers and our exposures. And this data, and we'll talk about with the toolkit, there is a change in what what is an exposure, so that there will be some tweaking that we would do to this dashboard based on the new toolkit information. But this is still being reported based on the old, you know, the toolkit as it stands now, it's not changing until the 21st. And I think the last time we met, we were in the forty, forty, fifty, sixty cases range, and then I think at our peak, we were you know, almost at a hundred cases. So we have seen a substantial drop in that. And I don't know, Ms. Shipman, if you're on, if you have anything that you would like to say regarding this.
Just to follow up what you said, what you've already said, and that is that our our internal numbers have declined drastically as well. And so, you know, we're definitely headed in the right direction.
Um, so based on that, and then after this recommendation, we're going to go over some other things which kind of helped the committee come to this recommendation. So hold tight once we read through this, because there's some still some things we want to say, but essentially, given the change in the toolkit and all the other recommendations that have happened over the past couple of days, the committee is recommending that we move to a mask optional status for student, staff, and visitors, starting on the 22nd. If Mecklenburg County releases their mask mandate tonight, again, they they were meeting at six o'clock. So unfortunately, our meeting kind of didn't didn't line up the way we needed it to for that, but the expectation is, you know, they will. So as long as that does happen tonight, this would be our recommendation. If they do not move to a mask optional status for the county, then we would still be required to follow the mandate. So I'm assuming for a vote tonight, it would be on that conditional status that we are no longer under a mandate. In keeping with that, we will continue to keep our dashboard weekly that Ms. Shipman does. Like I said, there will be a few tweaks to that so that we line up with what the toolkit is recommending. We're no longer gonna the way that exposures are going to be done, it's going to be reported exposures. So you'll you'll see some slight changes there. And then next slide. And so before we get into this, like, I just want to explain kind of a little bit. I know we've talked about this in the past, but just kind of the process of the committee. So when the committee meets, and and this time the meeting was kind of prompted by the change in the toolkit. But when the committee meets, you know, we're looking really towards the experts, and we're looking at it on a like a a whole level, like the whole United States, we're looking at it on a state level, and then, you know, primarily at the county level. And when we look at the experts, you know, we acknowledge that, you know, they have all the data and science and facts and and studies and everything available to them, and, you know, we rely on them to make, you know, these recommendations as they evaluate kind of the risks and benefits for each of the decisions that they make. And our our hope as a committee is to kind of move in line with the direction that they're going. I mean, what you don't want to have happen is you're you're an outlier in in either direction. You're either not, you know, not doing what you need to be doing based on either mandates or what they recommend, or, you know, in the other direction. So having said all of that, you know, we've been kind of watching over the past couple of weeks on, you know, how these experts are making decisions, the criteria that they're looking at, the recommendations that they're making, and there was even some updated data today with the CDC. They had a press conference at the White House, and they're nodding towards making, you know, a new recommendation for indoor mask masking next week. And there there was some information from our hospital systems. They've started to release the the ban that they had on visitors. So you know, we're kind of this this recommendation tonight is kind of in line with what we see these organizations working towards, and we feel, you know, through our discussions and through the, you know, the information that we're looking at, that you know, this move is to kind of move in line with that. So um, so some of the things that we did look at and kind of why we came up with our recommendation is that you know, the the toolkit kind of knotted to this as well as that contact tracing has kind of really been a little less effective with this Omicron variant because of how quickly the virus spread. And with the rapid testing that we're doing in school, a lot of times, like, you know, if you go to get a PCR test, which is the most reliable, you're waiting several days before you get those results back. We do have been doing rapid tests in school, and what we're finding is that you really need to wait until twenty-four to forty-eight, sometimes even longer, hours after symptoms start before the test is really effective. And then with the rules, you're out five days from your start of symptoms, and then you're allowed to be back in school. So really, we were finding cases where we were testing, and then a day or two later, you know, that that individual was able to be back into the building. So you know, contact Omicron did make contact tracing a little bit more difficult. Another thing is that, you know, the CDC did come out recently and acknowledged that cloth masking is not as effective in protecting against the Omicron variant as it was in previous, you know, variants. And that's something that, you know, weighed heavily with the committee. And there, you know, they acknowledged that really for better protection, it needs to be well fitting, which is tight against the face, and it needs to be KN95 or an N95 mask to provide that, you know, that protection. Vaccinations are still our best defense, and all staff and students have had the ability to be vaccinated. Every student in our school is in that five and older category, which, you know, they've been able to be vaccinated. And the quarantine period, you know, mandatory quarantine period, if now we were masked, so because we required masks, we were able to waive some of, you know, there was a difference in what was determined to be an exposure and what trip to quarantine. That now is no, the masking is no longer a requirement for that, so the quarantine, the possibility of quarantining students and individuals in and out of school is eliminated because the toolkit has provided that additional guidance. All right, next.
And Amy, when I, I'm going to piggyback a little bit on that, that in talking about masking, one of the main reasons why as a school, we felt that mandates were important was, one, we were following the the science at the time. Two, vaccinations were not while are readily available to all of our population. And three, the people's choice to not mask could have a very adverse effect to the educational experience of students. And with these changes, all three of those things have been addressed. So I think it's important to understand that the committee was really looking at it from the lens of, again, our main goal, which was student and staff safety, and then keeping keeping kids in school to the best of our ability. And again, following the science and what we have been tracking from the different experts that that has been addressed through these changes.
In addition, we've been looking at several of the other schools in in either some of the adjoining counties, or even there are some schools within the county that, you know, haven't been following the mandates, but in talking with those schools that have gone mask optional, they haven't really seen a disproportional increase in their infection rates than we have experienced, nor did they really see clusters. So, you know, it's nice that we have that information to look at as we were making our decisions. And that, again, to reiterate, you know, our primary goal has always been staff and student safety, safety and in-person learning. And with this new change to the toolkit and some of the guidance that's come out, you know, we're able to do that while, you know, providing a mask optional recommendation. I think if that is that the
No, and then and then the last thing is, I think it's important for us to remind, and as a committee, we started here, which is making this recommendation does not take away from our commitment from continued other mitigation strategies. We have high quality ventilations in each of the classrooms and in most of the common areas. That's been an ongoing process, which will continue through this summer in those common areas. Vaccinations are still recommended. And recognizing that that is a family and personal choice, we do know it is one of the layers of protection that is available. Access to our hygiene products and procedures. We still have ample opportunities for folks to wash their hands, use hand sanitizer, making sure that we're spraying the classrooms, that we have the appropriate materials necessary for for cleaning, routine cleaning and disinfection protocols. There we have increased daily cleaning by our staff, regular electrostatic sanitation of our classrooms, as well as we provide every staff member a desk and surface sanitizer called Sanicue. We also continue to have onsite rapid COVID testing, so we can, if students feel like they're symptomatic, we can quickly address that and check to see if that's the case so that quarantine can happen for symptomatic folks, as well as support by Ms. Shipman and Nurse Denise at the elementary. And then, obviously, for those who choose based on their personal circumstances, they can still continue to mask. All of our teachers will be continued to be offered N95 masks. And I believe Ms. Shipman sent out something again, and that, of course, will be an individual choice piece on people's circumstances and health conditions. So that is the last slide, and I don't know if there's any other things from the committee first before we open it up to to questions. Okay, hearing none by the committee, I think we're we're available and ready for whatever questions that that other board members who have not served on that committee might have.
Hey, Shannon, Amy. I think you mentioned that if Mecklenburg County doesn't lift some of the restrictions, you're expecting that to happen on the 21st. I saw the recommendation would be to start on the 22nd for the school. Can you just maybe tell us a little about the rationale for for the waiting period there?
I'll be, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, well, so we're expecting Mecklenburg County to lift the mandate today. So the reason, so the 21st, we don't have school. So the 22nd would be the first day back after the toolkit and the new changes to the toolkit become effective. So if we were to move to a mask optional status effective today, let's say, what that would mean is for the next week, if any student is exposed, because they don't, if they don't have, both students don't have masks on, then it would trip a quarantine period for the student who is exposed.
So we would still be held to the same standard that exists today, even though if they change something tonight, because the toolkit has not been updated.
Right, and just just to clarify, Mr. Tilly, there there are two things at play here. One is a county mandate that we we fully believe is going to be removed tonight. The other is a North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services guideline, which is through the toolkit, which does not take effect until February 21st. So February 22nd is the first day that Lake Norman Charter could exercise this recommendation.
Makes sense. Thank you for the clarification.
I believe Elizabeth had a question.
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to make sure I understood. So I heard you saying that for those folks who continue to wish to mask, that's that is certainly still their option. Are we taking an affirmative position that even though we're no longer requiring masks, we're still recommending that folks wear them just as an extra layer of protection?
So yes, I mean, if folks choose to wear the mask, it is always going to be an extra layer of protection. And so that will have to be a family decision. But the recommendation would, you know, we're always going to take the most conservative approach. We just believe that at this point, families have the option to assess where where they're at and what their risk conditions are and what they believe is in the best interest of of their students versus mandating when it would have had an adverse effect on other students.
And and that, to piggyback off of that question and answer, I'm assuming that applies equally to 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 teachers and staff, all the faculty as well, in addition to the students.
Correct. And and again, just reiterating that we do have high quality masks that we will be offering our teachers for as long as they want them and and need them based on their based on their circumstances.
Ms. Carr or Ms. Stein, you guys touched on the fact that you've looked at other schools who have been mask optional over the last, you know, several months. I'm curious, are there other schools in our local area that are also evaluating this decision? And, you know, what does our kind of peer set look like in terms of their actions on this issue?
Sure, that's a great question. And the answer to that is some of our peers are part of of the mask optional group. So Lincoln Charter has been mask optional for over a month now. They're probably our our closest and in size, they're almost identical to us in campuses and experience. And so we've been watching them closely, as well as Cabarrus County has been mask optional the last two weeks. And then tracking other schools throughout the state, and quite honestly, the country who've been in that. So as as Ms. Carr alliterated to, we were we have, they have not seen a significant difference in their infection or exposure rate during that time period. And then as in regards to our other peers, to my knowledge, almost every school district in this area, and certainly our peers, including Pine Lake and CSD, are also having similar meetings this week. Because no matter what the school decides, this is a big change in recommendations at the state level, at the local level, and quite honestly, at the national level. So if you, you know, as as I'm sure anybody on the committee will tell you, we are constantly looking at all of those areas to look to see if they align and what their recommendations are. And because there has been such a change due to Omicron and the precipitous drop in the number of cases, every school has to take this, take this measure up to at least have conversation about what makes the most sense for their school. And I see Nicole, you've raised your hand as well.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Can you speak to our confidence level that cases are really going down when more people are testing at home? So it's not being reported. That's one. And then just one other question I'll put out there is the CDC, when they did speak today, made mention that, yes, we're getting, we're getting close, but we're not there yet. Mecklenburg County, regardless of what the county commissioners decide today, is still high spread in terms of, you know, those metrics that have been guiding us all this time. Why not wait until we until we get that that guidance that we're no longer in a in a high in a high spread?
So I'm going to ask Ms. Shipman to take the first question on the confidence on spread and numbers, and then I think between myself, Ms. Carr, maybe other members of the committee, we can answer the second question. So Ms. Shipman or?
Yes, I'm ready. So I believe your question was, how confident can we be in the testing for because of, I'm assuming because of home testing, home kits, and as opposed to CP, as opposed to PCR tracking? And the answer to that is that home testing has always been an issue in in making our numbers lower than what they really were. And we've we've talked about that at at several board meetings. I've always said the numbers are higher than they seem because we are not tracking rapid tests, right? Not home tests, not rapid tests at StarMed, not rapid tests from school. Only the PCRs are being tracked, but it's been that way the whole time. So so when numbers are declining, I assume then that they are declining at the same rate that they were changing based off the PCR and the home kits. So really, what the the best metric to use for me personally, the best metric to use is hospitalizations, because that's always the last thing to go down. So if hospitalizations are going down, you know, percent positives are a daily thing, but when you have COVID and lots of other things, and you go to the hospital, you don't just stay one day. So you're there three, four days, and that number continues to build because it's like Legos, they're stacking on top of each other. So when those people are getting better and no new people are filling those beds and the numbers are able to decline, that then tells me that that our community is not getting as sick as long as much. And so hospitalizations are the numbers that I that I think we can go by that that don't, doesn't matter whether you tested positive at home or PCR. You were either sick enough to go to the hospital or or you weren't. So that's that's my metric. That's my answer. Yes. Home kit, home tests are definitely a part of keeping the numbers lower, but they have been since their availability in the drugstore.
Just want to add that they weren't free. Like now, people are getting, like, everybody in the world or in the country is able to get those free tests. And so I think it might
Absolutely.
a higher percentage of people going that route. But thank you for explaining the hospitalizations.
And I I think, too, looking at our internal numbers, I mean, we're a subset of the community. And, you know, we have, I think, throughout this entire pandemic, you know, we have tended to have a little bit lower of a positivity rate within our specific community than the broader community has had. But given that our numbers have dropped significantly inside of our community, I think that that's an indication that you know, the, you know, can point to that it's declining. And and also, we got good news today that Novant has released its ban on visitors, because they're they're seeing a decline in the hospitalizations, and they're able to kind of work towards more normal operations. So I thought that that was, you know, I'm thankful for that for those that, you know, would love to have their family members with them, but, you know, also thankful that we're, you know, we're seeing progress to where, you know, our our hospital system systems are not at critical, you know, points like they have been in the past.
And then I can start to try to tackle the other question, and then other committee members can can jump in. You know, the number one reason why we're bringing this forward and had the discussion as a committee is because of what I alluded to in the slide about what options are now available, that there there are so many different options that were not available before when it came to masking being so much of a primary, one of the protections. You know, again, when not all of our students had had access to and families to vaccinations, when kids were going to be put out of school because of exposure, those are times where we felt like there had to be a mandate for the entire community because it was putting at risk the entire community by individual choice. At this point, those, that is not the case. And while having a student masked is is one more layer, and certainly would recommend that for families who want to continue that, it is those those key differences is the the difference, because when you mandate something for Because when you mandate something for for families, we need to have really strong reasons why we're mandating them. And those were strong reasons and they aligned with what our philosophy was as a school. And I think we have been very successful as a school. Um, but there, tho- those have been large changes. And while the CDC is one place where we look to for information, locally, we're getting a lot more information from our public health department, from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, from the leading virologist here in at Atrium to Dr. Washington's recommendation that overwhelmingly points that this is, this is the direction to be heading in. So you're, until the pandemic is completely behind, there are going to be folks that this is uncomfortable for. And I think it's important that we acknowledge that because that there are going to be both staff and students and families that this is the third major change during the pandemic. Um, we first went from virtual to in-person. That was very uncomfortable when we did it, but we did it being thoughtful about what information was there. We moved from partial, you know, hybrid to full instruction, which meant less social distancing. That was uncomfortable. And we put all the procedures and things in place and did it thoughtfully. And in both of those cases, it was done safely and we did not see a large spike. And we, I think as a committee, have looked at that again and said, this is based on all of the information we have, the things we have in place, um, the the therapeutics that are in place. We are at a place where the mandate is no longer necessary. Not that we're not recommending to do it, not that it's not another layer of protection and, you know, certainly respecting um the differing views. And I will tell you, as a school of leadership, we've talked a lot about this year, one of our leadership traits, which is compassion, humility, and, you know, respect for others. And that means we are going to continue to make some choices around, as an example, how we run lunch. Um, that is going to be thoughtful about not impeding on other folks rights and and fears and concerns. But that is what led us to the this discussion, or at least that is how how I would synopsize our discussion as a committee and certainly would welcome other committee members if they had anything else that they felt was important.
Shannon, Amy, I don't really have anything other than what what you've already said, other than to underscore, um, you know, that the committee has been adamant the whole, throughout the pandemic of keeping our personal preference out of it and really, uh, uh, really looking to the guidance and relying on the, um, you know, the CDC, local health department, North Carolina Department of Health and the governing bodies and to take all of the data that they have access to and to constantly weigh that risk benefit equation. Um, and so we, I think we've done that at all of those key junctures that you just mentioned, Shannon, and we find ourselves here again, and that's where it's pointing us.
May I ask one more question about the toolkit? Um, can you explain the language around masking? Because I thought it said, if you're in an area of high spread, masking is recommended.
You got that, Shannon, or you want me to take it? No, I'm gonna, I'm looking at my toolkit expert, which on my screen is this way.
Yes, there are, there are several recommendations i- in the toolkit that we will continue to to recommend. And so with that, if it, you know, if it, that's why, that's why the choice is there. So we we recommend that they do it, we're in a high spread. If you're uncomfortable, we recommend that you continue to mask. If you're not uncomfortable with the level of spread and you're ready to take it off, then that's certainly a personal decision.
And I think that goes to recommendation versus mandate. And that's the difference, is that in, at a county level, it was mandated when they felt it was needed to be mandated. And there, you know, I don't think you're gonna hear people um negate that they would recommend, while things are in high spread, to continue to do that. But there therein lies the difference, is the recommendation versus mandate.
And uh, so maybe a follow-up question or clarification. So Ms. Shipman, has the toolkit um always been a recommend approach for this school year?
No, as a matter of fact, in the beginning, when the toolkit was originally out, as when it first started, everything was either required or, um, you know, we had, we had a choice. Most everything, most everything in the toolkit was required at that time, all the way from taking temperatures to putting tape on the floor for distancing in line. And then as, as we learned more from the science, as we learned more um about how it's spread, how it's not spread, as as things changed, variants changed, then the toolkit has changed with that. And so the last major update prior to this one was schools should and schools could think about. All still recommendations, the only thing actually required in the toolkit at that time before this last update was that we quarantine um students for exposure and quarantine students who are symptomatic or COVID positive. And now even uh, as we've already stated, that has changed. The only thing now that is still currently required is that positive students quarantine for X amount of days. And that's it, everything else is just a recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Stein and Ms. Carr, if the board does vote for mask optional tonight and Mecklenburg County lifts the mandate as well, will the Safe Schools Committee continue to um remain intact and convene to review um, you know, the impacts of the, of that change?
Yes, um, absolutely, we're, we're committed until, you know, we're getting into um, you know, through, at least throughout the school year to to continue to monitor that and as long as needed. Um, but obviously, with any time we've made the large change, we're looking to see what those changes have resulted in. And if if there is a need, just like there was a special meeting here, we could, we could ask for one and pivot back. There also, from an operational standpoint, if we recognize that there's something that's happening that would impact, again, our two tenants, student and staff safety and or operationally letting kids be in school as much as possible, we're gonna adjust. So if we can handle that app or inside the the school walls, we'll do that from an operational standpoint. And if it is something that is a larger issue, um, that would would need board vote, we would bring it back. But it, it's something we're gonna closely monitor to make sure that any decision-making and any implementation is resulting in us still being able to keep with our, with our goals.
Okay. Any other questions for the Safe Schools Committee? Okay, I think at this point, we're ready to move on to a vote then. Um, I guess first, I need a motion um from somebody.
I move that we approve the recommendation presented tonight by the Safe Schools Committee.
There's a second.
Jen, I'll second it.
Thank you, Jared, thank you, Jen. Okay, any other questions or for further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. If I did my, well, uh, let's see. I need to to kind of go through and make sure that we're clear for the record keeping. So um, Ms. Benford, I believe that was you, that was um the nay, correct?
Correct.
Okay, was there anybody else that was a nay from the board? Okay, thank you, I just want to make sure that the record keeping was um correct in that regard. Okay, um, all right, so in that case, uh, motion carries. And um, we will, I guess, uh, await the decision from Mecklenburg County tonight and um, uh, be able to go from there.
And and just, um, so the board has some awareness and because we are waiting on Mecklenburg County, um, normally, we try to to communicate with our families right after a board meeting, but we're gonna do that tomorrow morning um, so that we are making sure that we're being accurate with what what is being reported to them. So this will, I know we have some folks that are in attendance and I'm sure will share in in other mediums, but the school will send something out in the morning, um, first to staff and then um, we will get that out to our families as well.
And it looks like Mecklenburg County is about twenty minutes behind on their agenda, so it's gonna be a late meeting for them.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shipman.
Okay, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
This is Elizabeth. Oh, sorry, Amy.
Elizabeth, I'll let you take it.
Oh, thank you, Elizabeth, I'll move to adjourn.
And I'll second it, this is Amy.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for making time um this evening. I know it was a a last minute effort and just appreciate the flexibility that everybody showed. So um, have a good rest of your evening and um, see each other in person in a couple of weeks.
Thanks, Fred.
Thanks, everyone.